All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Board Trustees. Hello. Good evening, guys. Welcome to the Board Trustees Workshop. This Wednesday, October 16th. We will be discussing short-term rentals, or as we lovingly refer to it as Chapter 100. No one refers to it as lovingly. So let's get started, because I know we have a lot to discuss, and we're joined by Jen Zorick, who is going to be invaluable to this process and has already been. Were you the Chair of the Committee?
Yeah.
The Chair of the Committee, the Ad-Hoc Committee. So let's first start with the opportunity to request to add or modify the agenda if anyone has anything.
I just want to add announcements.
Okay.
Do we do announcements?
Yeah, we can do announcements.
Yard waste.
Yard waste, that's right. Go ahead.
Yeah, it's a bulk pickup, not yard waste.
Excuse me.
Yes. The bulk pickup is Saturday morning, so get your stuff out Friday nights. They'll take big pieces of...
Wooden furniture.
Furniture.
Cold spring, mattress, one per household.
No electronics.
No electronics, nothing with freon.
No explosives.
No explosives, no tires, or petroleum-based products.
Right. Yeah.
Right. And then I have one other announcement I'd like to share, and we bought a letter from HJFC this week. And I think that I would like to read it into the record if you guys would.
As an announcement?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's an important communication. It answers a lot of the questions that we've been discussing, and I think that it should be shared.
All right. I mean, I don't know if it counts as an announcement, but, and I appreciate that you want to share it. Can we add it as an agenda? Well, no.
I don't want to discuss it. I just want to...
Yep. So your interest is to read it into the record, is that...
Yeah.
Okay. Well, the issue with that is that we did receive our other correspondence, which we are not reading into the record this evening, so I feel like perhaps we should wait and do it next week, and that way we can include the other letters that we received, if we decide that we want to read them all into the record, or just make sure that they are for public consumption versus doing this as a one-off. That would be my preferred. I appreciate that we got a communication. I just don't think that tonight's night you read it as an announcement.
That's fine. Then I'll just note that we did receive a communication from Hudson Hinesburg Trail, which answered a lot of the questions and misconceptions and confusions that were expressed in the last meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, so I wonder if perhaps we should just switch the agenda also quickly and just do the homecoming approval, so that we can just jump into short-term rentals and have that be the deal. Okay. So we're going to Item B, 2B, which is the approval of the Halley Homecoming Parade. I was just at the girls' soccer game. It was great. Halley won 4-2. Yes, wonderful job by the seniors, including the mayor's daughter. So I believe she had a goal. So, well done, Josie. So the details of the parade on Friday is such. Line up at 5:50 at Depot Square, step off at 6:00 PM, and the route is up Main Street to Craig's Side and then onto the field. We will have three officers and deputies from the Sheriff's Department for traffic control. And the parade was great last year, and I'm sure it'll be amazing this year. So we need to approve the parade, and so I suppose I can make that motion. Make a motion to approve the Halley Homecoming Parade for this Friday, October 18th, starting at 5:50 and stepping off at 6:00 PM.
Okay, good.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Sure.
Approved.
Go home team.
Go home team. Go Halley. All right. Now on to business. Chapter 100. So it's been a while since we've discussed this. I thought it would probably be a good idea to just do like a quick refresher for us and also for for the audience, such as they are, just so that we can kind of all start from the same understanding. A lot of work was done. This has been many years in the making, and the Ad-Hoc Committee was integral to making this possible, so with that, perhaps we do a little intro. And then I think the object of this conversation, for me at least, I think is to kind of go over the bigger outstanding issues that we have, I think, and to kind of remind ourselves of what those issues were and see if we're still in the same place, or if we've changed our minds or have new thoughts. And so, Jen, I would love if maybe you want to just kind of like walk us through it, and then we can have a conversation.
Okay. Great. And one of the people...
Yeah, Mike, is our village attorney. Yes, Jonathan. Hi, Jonathan. I'm sorry.
Hi, everyone.
Thank you for joining us this evening.
Hi. Of course, yeah.
Thanks.
Excellent.
So just reminding everyone that there is a Chapter 100 short-term rental law on the books right now that was passed by a previous village board and has been in effect for two years, actually.
I believe the board, did we rescind it?
No.
No. No, we didn't.
I know that.
We didn't.
It's just...
Except enforcement or something like that.
No, we did not stop enforcement. I clarified that. Kathleen can confirm before we started the Ad-Hoc Committee work, because that was an issue on our large committee, whether it was being enforced. So it is being enforced. There hasn't been, there have been 20-something complaints, but most of them are from one property. And there hasn't been a problem, but it hasn't, we know that there's lots of short-term rentals operating without a permit right now. That's not any of my business. I just wanted to, for the record, there's a law on the books right now.
Yeah.
In May 2022, this board, under a different makeup, met and decided to make an Ad-Hoc Committee of citizens to provide, do research and provide you, as an advisory trustee, with feedback. It was sort of a broad swath of different opinions on short-term rentals in the community. I actually was like shocked that we got along well and got stuff done. It was very nice, like a nice testament to, even though people disagree, everyone, you're able to come to consensus on the main issues, which was great. We convened in June 2022, and then gave the report, which you sort of summarized. That was in November 2022. And then, so the draft that you have for you today, all the comments that are from me in red, JLD4, I think they're labeled, those were the comments that were turned over to you, you, the village board, the village board at that time, in November 2022. And in March of that, 2023, so that following March, you guys, the village board at the time, met to start discussing the outstanding issues that we had lined up for you, basically. And you got through a lot of them. Some of them needed more research or questions to be asked to the attorney. Then it got tabled for a long time. We have a little bit of a different makeup of the board now. Aaron's not here, so I was hoping to bring him up to speed a little bit, but it's okay. And it's sort of been restarted now, this process, kind of starting where we left off, generally. Since that time, some things have changed in the village. The zoning, Chapter 134 update, has been completed and ratified in its law now. So that has some implications for this drafting. It's different than back in March 2023. There's new parking program that actually is working and is in effect now, after a lot of hard work. That had some effect on this, because that was not in effect at the time. And there's been several newer court cases, so case law sort of information that we've gotten in these last, this last year, that will be useful if we're trying to make a law that's, you know, not going to be, not likely to be challenged or that is legal.
Right.
And so that brings us to today. We have, like, I sent a list to you guys of the sort of outstanding items on October 2nd. I was trying to summarize. I recognize that this is so complex and making everyone's head spin, and we all have to catch up, so it's okay if... That's why I think it's important to me that I be at every meeting, because I've been sort of the carrier of this information through several different iterations now. And even though it hasn't been that long of a time, so I'd be happy to help and whatever it has to be.
Thank you.
So the outstanding issues, as I summarized them for you guys a couple of weeks ago, are these. Chapter 134 concordance, which we're not really gonna, you made a few comments, I think, but there's a few. I have a whole list of things, but I don't think we should talk about that today, because that's more like making sure it lines up, and it's a long process. The enforcement process and sort of the backup for worst offenders, which village staff is working on a little bit as they go through writing the Section 6 and Section 5, which are the permitting, the procedure for applying for permits, and the procedure for reviewing permit applications. The shared driveway issue. So since the last meeting in March of 2023, we got advice from John First, our village attorney. The mayor did over email, I wish I was copied on those emails, and basically she seems to be of the mind, and the attorney sort of advised that you could just not allow shared, you don't want the village to get involved. And the question for you is, do you want the village to get involved in private contracts? He advised that you probably don't. There might be some way, if you really wanted shared driveway owners to be able to participate in this market, or whatever you want to call it, in this privilege, that you could just eliminate this clause altogether, meaning you're not endorsing any kind of private, and just let property owners fight it out, which seems like, kind of like, for example, if someone who had a driveway applied for a permit or short-term rental met all the other requirements and were given a permit, it wouldn't be the villagers' business to decide. They would only need to decide if the parking requirement was there, or if it was sort of safe access to that parking. And the neighbors themselves that share the driveway would have to decide or dispute it out, which seems like terrible to me, but that's an option. Or the other option was just remove, prohibit shared driveway owners from taking part in this privilege, which would obviate everything. And the attorney said both of those options were viable. It's up to you guys. So that's shared driveway issue. The resident occupancy requirement, which we've sort of asked Jonathan to weigh in on today, whether fees and fines, as they're stated right now, fees associated with permits and fines associated with violations, whether the fees need to be tooled to the actual cost of enforcement, and the staff time to do the permits and that sort of thing. So they have to have some kind of reasonable correlation. The fines, it was unclear. That was the question we had with the attorney, if the fines also had to have that, or can we just set fines, leave them at the rate they're set currently in the law, which is, I think, what we suggested. Or do they have to have some correlation to something? We weren't sure about that. And then finally, the permitting process. So the that sort of thing. Greg and Abigail and the mayor, a few other people have a copy, and they're working on it now. Basically, so those are my sort of shared summary points, and the mayor has shared like billions since that time. They're all kind of fit into these categories, I think. And then I saw that some people had already sort of looked through and re-familiarized ourselves with the March 2023 draft and made some comments for areas that need to be discussed. And the last thing I'll say is that we did send to John First, who, I guess, Jonathan, it's your job to do this now, five questions that the mayor authorized me to ask. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but one of them was whether the resident occupancy requirement, he felt that it was been challenged as unconstitutional, and several of the New York case law summaries that I showed, because you're supposed to regulate the use, the land use, not the ownership, so not the business in a short-term rental law, because our short-term rental law is tied into our zoning law. It's like goes hand in hand. So it has nothing to do. We need to look at the use of the property. That's what you guys are looking at, land use, not other, we're not supposed to be regulating other items. So, does that make sense? So the resident occupancy requirement has fallen afoul of the Interstate Commerce Clause of the Constitution and a few other, and has won cases and a few.
The requirement to have a resident.
Yes. So several short-term rental laws in New York, tons of them have this, but it has started to be challenged, and a few of those cases have been won. And it's been challenged by out-of-state owners of properties, so people who own a building but don't live in the village, but live in another state. Because the resident occupancy requirement prohibits that person from using their property in this way, I guess. And because they're in two different states, I don't know, I'm not summarizing this right. You can't prohibit that owner. But you're dequalifying a certain class of owners, which is discriminatory. Does that make sense? Meaning out-of-state owners are disqualified from participating.
Right. I thought you had found a really good solution to that, though.
So what I was asking the attorney in this question is, do they feel that that's true, and could we, and to get around that, just have a resident occupant, full-time, primary resident occupant, that's like a leese, but lives there full-time?
Caretaker or whatever.
But lives there. Still, would, the idea to have a, you know, primary resident occupant be the host is because then you have a neighbor, and you really, it's like the best way to eliminate most of the things that everyone is worried about, because you have someone that's there that you know, the neighbors know them, they're responsible to them, that will be supervising this business activity. And so it didn't seem like it mattered. You guys can discuss whether the leese, like the host could be primary resident there, but didn't have to be the owner, like the owner could designate.
It could be the employee of the owner who lives in the building or something.
Yeah, who lives on the property full-time as their primary resident.
Yeah.
And that seemed like it would meet the goals of the, this law, to protecting residential character, et cetera, without... So that was one question we had for the attorney. I don't know if we want to go through...
No, yeah, I agree with all that. I think the approach that you have to take is to have, you know, a requirement that the rental be owner-occupied or some kind of designated host that lives or can be at the property within a certain amount of time, something like that. But I think if there's a strict requirement that to own and operate a short-term rental, you have to be a village resident, I think a court would probably find that to be invalid, because it's too broad. It doesn't narrowly achieve the village's goals in regulating short-term rentals.
The other, I think another reason that we were interested in that piece was also to limit the kind of investment property, the commercialization of our housing stock, and so the piece of like no corporate ownership. Maybe that addresses that concern. So I guess that's a question to you. Do you feel like it does? And does that also have legal concerns? Because I think if we lost both of those, then this wouldn't meet a lot of the goals that we have.
That's a separate, that's a totally related, but it's also in there, both things. So that's a separate question for you, Jonathan.
Yeah, and I think it kind of has the same answer, where if you just put a blanket prohibition on entities owning properties and using them as short-term rentals, I think same thing where you're really regulating the user, not the use. But, you know, there are probably ways that you could word a statute that would make it more difficult for LLCs and corporations to comply and achieve the village's goals of not having these absentee owners who just buy these properties up and rent them out.
So that, the thing that we're talking about is, I think it's somewhere, yeah, LLC, I think it's in Section...
Oh, L, STR permit may not be issued to any business entity.
Yes, Section 4L.
On page 101.
So right now...
So this is separate from the definition of a host, what we consider a host to be, but it's related. Because what we have right now, Jonathan, you have this, you have this document in front of you, if I have any chance?
I do, yeah, the red line.
Yeah, so it's on page 101L. The current, this is just verbatim, the current law, I think. It says STR permit may not be issued to any business entity. And this was under advisement from John First, actually. I remember this now, because we asked. Properties owned by personal trusts, family trusts, and other such entities cannot obtain an STR permit unless the property is resident occupied by the designated host of the STR. So I remembered Mr. First advised us that you couldn't say, may not be issued to any LLC or the kind of company, but you could prohibit it in this way, but I think you're changing that a little bit or updating it a little bit. Is that what you're...
Maybe, yeah. I mean, I think the way it's written now is definitely more defensible than just an outright ban on entities owning it, because it kind of articulates the reasoning and, you know, a requirement that these corporate or trust owners could comply with.
Okay. It's like, it's a very common thing in almost all the STR laws that we looked at. That doesn't mean that it's advisable or legal, but other STR laws have it, etc. I think for this reason, it was like one of the most, whatever you want to call it, worried, but community class, that it's either how the product's bought up by and becomes a giant hotel, I guess.
Right, like it should be a house first, and then you can do a short-term rental if it's your house.
I mean, I think we also know there's circumstances that are happening currently, people who own multiple houses here who are using them as SDRs. It's happening. And then somebody who does not live in... So, I mean, I don't, personally, to me, I mean, whatever, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer. So whatever the language is that needs to be to articulate it as finely as possible, to make it clear that we don't, that this is something that we wouldn't want, I think, you know, makes the most sense. I wouldn't want to, certainly wouldn't want to take it out to, like, to your point. I think that's kind of like, that's the point of of what we wanted this to to take care of or to avoid or to mitigate against. So could we talk through the, like, the leese, sort of, you know, the host idea, this resident occupied host? Because this, just to try to think through, are there ways? It feels like it's a way that there could potentially be of use of the program, and I guess I'm curious if you've seen any of that, Jen. But, so, a person can only be a resident of one place, like by definition, right? They have to choose one place, but it's their primary residence. Maybe we even say primary resident occupied or something like that, so that it's not that they're seasonally a resident, and then the next week they're seasonally a resident of somewhere else. Is there...
Definition of host.
Yes, the definition of... It says primary residence. It also has a time that you have to be a resident, like 260 days.
Well, so you're, under the definition section, host is defined as, if, right now, it's defined as a person who owns or leases and occupies a different property and ability offered for a short-term rental. And then primary residence is defined as residents on property or owner or leasee residence no fewer than 260 nights per calendar year. And then the permitting process that staff is working on involves how, I mean, that's perfectly normal. People have to prove that their primary residency by a couple of different ways.
Yeah, it's like a normal... What should I hear is stating that they have to be residents, that it has to be their primary residence for three years.
Right.
So it's not just a one-year residence.
Okay, so then they can only be, a person can only be a resident of one place as the kind of host, right? And you know, even if it's owned by a corporation, there's... And then the corporation can only own one? It don't have in...
Well, somewhere that there's a limit. That's a point for you guys to discuss. Right now, we still have L in that, that said a permit may not be issued to any business entity. So that's a, that's sort of like a new question.
I thought, except I thought it was unless there was...
Personal trusts, family trusts, and other things that have a resident occupant. But that's, that still means that somebody who doesn't live in the village, or you can't like prohibit people that live in Fishkill from owning property in Cold Spring.
Yeah.
And like, that's the problem with... So, so let's say some, a neighbor in Phillips Town owns a village home and has a full-time, rents it full-time to a person, a natural person, not a business entity, who is, that's their primary resident. That person could designate, the owner could designate that person as the host, because it meets the primary resident requirement of the host, and then could operate, if the property met these other things, could operate a short-term rental. So you're concerned with like getting around something with that?
I'm just trying to like think, I don't have anything in mind. Just try, it just seems like there's like a lot of... This part just seems important as we're thinking through, like, how could somebody kind of like find their way around the contortions? That's all.
Well, it's like super important, because it's sort of like the number one thing, that almost even everyone on the Short-Term Rental Committee agreed to. People who are very pro-short-term rentals are, most of them live in the village and are on, they're operating, you know what I mean? They, everyone that lives in the village, I think, doesn't want the village to be bought up by business entities and hauled it out. No one wants that. That's like one of our primary roles, is to like protect the residential character and sort of local volunteerism and all the things that come with people actually living here.
That's why I just want to like ferret out any... Well, wait.
The problem is that the ways that most communities that I've researched get, meet this goal of not letting the community be hauled out, is they require a primary resident owner to be the operator of the SDR. So that's almost all the laws that you look at right now. That's what they say, and they're starting to be challenged now
Yeah.
in different places, including New York and that legal summary that John First office replied to. So this is sort of, you don't have to change this to like a primary resident host, but it's sort of like jumping ahead to sort of bulletproof the law a little bit more.
I think this is really effective, what you've done here, because it like respects the rules that we have to follow, but it like still maintains that someone lives there and it's not just your hotel. Like, what I imagine this being is someone has a huge house and a carriage house in the backyard. And the carriage house is where they have the gardener living. And the gardener is the designated host. And the gardener manages the house, SDR, all year, except for when the family comes to visit for two months of the year. Their vacation house or whatever. And I imagine that could happen in this, in, under this, under the rules that we have to deal with. That's like, seems like the worst-case scenario of what you were looking for, but I don't know how we would stop that if we, by law, can't prevent someone who owns the property from renting it out as long as there's some buddy living there. Like, we can't stop them, so at least we get the gardener as a resident?
The gardener would have had to live here for three years.
Right, so it has to be an established person who's here.
Well, and let's be honest, like, there's not very many of these properties in Cold Spring.
No.
Yeah.
Not really.
There will be more because of the new ADU addition, like the ADU accessory dwelling units are legal now in some certain very limited cases, and that's something we'll get to. You made it about that. We'll get to later when we're talking about it, but like, I agree with Eliza that you're... I mean, personally, I like, I live in an area that has renters. I've always had renters as neighbors or property street, and I live in the area of the village. And renters and people who own their house are exactly the same. They're like your neighbor, you know? And that, it seemed like on a short-term rental Ad-Hoc Committee, everyone felt the same way. Like, as long as there was somebody that was a resident that lived there, whether they were renting or they owned the building, it didn't matter. But what your concern is, is basically, if we're not allowed to have this, permits may not be issued to a business entity, then does that mean that, let's say... Uh, permits may not be issued to a business entity, then does that mean that, let's say, Disney could buy up. You know, forty houses in Cold Spring and rent them each, each to a full time resident. I mean, like. I don't know if that, first of all, you can only have one short, this in the law, you only have one. One of, only one, like, if you, if you, if I owned five properties in the village, I could only have one, one permit to operate a full spring out of one of those.
Um, apply, so if you have five, if you own a block.
No, the owner, uh, right now, in the current process, the owner applies, because basically the owner. You want to avoid like what happens in the city all the time, which is like a tenant, sub leasing, that, you know, sometimes without the owner's knowledge. So, the owner applies for the permit and is the responsible party and gets the violations and pays the fines and blah, 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 blah. And they designate a host that is the, who's their tenant, and that relationship is between them, we're not involved in that. But they're designated at, designating them as the host in the permit process.
Now, each LLC is going to be its own entity, so if I'm an industrious business owner, I could set up a dozen LLCs, known a dozen homes in the village. With all pri- different primary residences.
Right.
Or primary.
If we got rid of L, but right now it's still in there, I feel like, um, Jonathan is telling us that. We should maybe look at this more closely, John first surprised that this was okay, what we put in, this was a year ago. So maybe we just need to take some time with, with that, with number L about business entity and like, um, research that a little bit more.
Yeah, I think definitely, because there's been a lot of litigation, uh, in both New York and in federal court and. Every short term rental law is worded a little bit differently, so it's kind of hard to get a broad rule out of that. So I think that's something we need to really look at closely and make sure that it's worded as, as strongly as possible. I don't know that there's any real right answer, any, um, you know, where you can word the law that no one could ever successfully challenge it. But I think if we look at it more closely, we can come up with something that's pretty good.
Okay, so that, so why don't we, that's one of the ones that is still outstanding that will.
Section four L, um, and I just would have liked to, last thing for Laura, like. Um, I would suggest you might want to add, like, like classes done to the definition of host, that, um. Primary resident, we have, I just read, that it's also the person that stays overnight on the property during the entire term. Of the guest rental or whatever, because there has been some, I was researching this a little bit. Um, that's like one of the other workarounds that people do a lot, is they vacate. And try to rent the entire property, but you need to like make sure in your law, it's, it's clear that someone has to be there. Like, so what you're trying to enable is people short term renting their home for extra income, et cetera, um, not like. Renting their whole entire house. And the difference between the one time short term rental and the regular short term rental that we're talking about is. The ho- regular hosted short term rental that we're proposing here is the one time short term rental, you could consider allowing. There to just be, and the host not to have to be there the whole time.
But that's only like fourteen days, right?
Yeah, and it's an unlimited, everybody could participate in that for one time, so if you go away for Christmas or whatever, those seem to be. Just from the ad hoc committee discussion, like, less worrisome to people, it's more. Entire streets turning into many hotels that we're worried, not like that your neighbor short term rentals their house every once, you know, once a year or whatever.
The host had seemed well described in other places. So that, I mean. Guess if we need to add it to the host, that sounds fine, just to make it really clear, but it seemed like it was clear. And other, other parts, but that's a good idea.
Okay, so that's that, the resident occupancy requirement. So we're, are you guys all, like, comfortable with? With the, putting a pin in the business entity prohibition part, but is it okay to have this? Host be defined as not necessarily the owner, but just that's way.
I think it's what we have to do.
I mean, if you, I guess, yeah, it's not ideal, but if that's the way to make it a little bit more bulletproof, then. So we're still left litigation.
Um, so the second question for Jonathan's office was, um. Liability insurance, so like a small thing, can the village legally require the owner of a property to show proof of personal liability insurance? Or special S T R rider to the homeowner's insurance in order to apply for an S T R permit? And I got, that language is from the law that's right now on the books, that's what's required right now, and that just. Question came up about that because it seems like it's, I didn't understand why the village was involved in this. And because that seems like a personal, like, requirement between a business runner and their client. And what is the village's interest, and is that okay to have?
Yeah, no, I, I agree, I think, um, you know, you, the village doesn't, certainly doesn't require liability insurance by any other type of business. And I don't think it really has any interest in this case either.
Yeah, I mean, as a business, you kind of want to do that just for your own protection, but.
For like licensing and other things to prove that you have that insurance, we have no other regulatory body for this.
We don't have that on any of the other permit, no requirement.
Um, no, so building permits are, you're, we're required to show liability and workers' comp insurance in order to get a building permit in the village.
Okay.
Um, when it comes to other businesses in the village, if you think about it, those businesses have shown. Proof of insurance to get their operating license, to get their food handler license, right, like they've shown it in another point in the process. And the village relies upon that.
Well, I, I think.
But in this case, there's no other opportunity.
Right, this is the only opportunity, and what does this prevent is like, your house catches on fire and burns down. The neighbor's house too.
Well, more so.
Or if something happens to your guest.
Something happens to a guest.
A guest drowns in the pool.
A guest falls and breaks their ankle.
Right, any number of things.
The question was basically, is the village have a safety interest here? And is the village in some way liable in this contract that we're requiring between, you know. The business owner and their insurance company, like, I, I don't, we didn't understand that, right, we're talking about Q under section four, that's the, the.
And, yeah, and I think Kathleen was saying that, is that enough also, at some point, she mentioned like. Five hundred thousand seems low.
Have you seen it in other?
Yeah, it's in, in some other laws, it's not in all of them, but, um. Yeah, it's literally like a, it's a question of legality, basically, yeah.
No, I, I think it's, it's probably beyond the, the village's powers, you know, in some cases like building permits, there might be requirements for certain types of insurance. But I think that probably comes from other, um, statutory authorities, like the state building code, uh, but, um. I talked, you know, John and I discussed this and he agrees that, um. You know, just as a, a general matter, the village probably can't require a business to have liability insurance.
Is there a requirement for other innkeepers to have liability insurance?
For other what?
For other innkeepers, so like hoteliers, are they required to have liability insurance?
I don't know, I'm not sure.
Because essentially that's what the S T R becomes, right, is a, is a hotel.
Even that's kind of a tricky question, really, because I think if it's still designed or intended to only be occupied by one family. I think it's still falls within residential uses.
But that, that actually is unclear.
Right.
Currently being defined, so I agree with you, Greg, but it's, it's unclear, it's like an evolving definition, basically.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we just need to find out if we can, I, I personally feel like it would be better if we did require it. Just because, like, you know, you're bringing other people in that aren't your family and your neighbors are. Close proximity in a village is small, it, it, if there was something bad that happened and there wasn't liability insurance, then like, somebody's on a hook. Or like have a major loss. So, this seems like as a business enterprising thing, even if it's in the residential district. It should be there.
Well, the question that you asked, I think, is relevant, I, I see what you're saying. The question about business entity, because some S T, other S T R laws that I looked up require. Like, we don't have in our code, village of Cold Spring, we don't issue business licenses. So, it, that's usually the point at which a business, like a hotel, they need to be licensed, or like a landscaper or whatever. They need to show their liability and their workers' comp and their blah, 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 but we, even in that case here, we're not involved in that. The, the county licenses certain kinds of businesses, like landscapers and that sort of thing, and contractors and plumbers and stuff. But I couldn't find, like, if a hotel or has to have that same thing. Um, so a lot of the other places that have this in their code, also have in their code that they have to have a business license. Or they have to be registered with the occupancy, with the treasurer for, as not, for the occupancy tax. They have an additional requirement on this, but kind of, I don't know, makes it more in your realm.
But also, I mean, to the point of it sort of operating as a, I mean, like, those, a hotel is also set up to. Specifically for people to come in and out, so it has, you know, multiple. Fire extinguishers and exits and, and it's been, you know, looked at by a buildings department and a fire department to make sure that it. Fits all whatever the legal requirements are for that type of facility, someone's home is not that. Right, I mean, you have homeowners insurance, hopefully you have a fire extinguisher, but you don't have like, it's not set up the same way. So I, I, I agree, like, some, somewhere there should be. I don't know, some sort of proof of, of coverage on the worst case scenario that something does happen. I, I think that's kind of like a reasonable thing, whether we can require that is a legal question, but I think that I get the thinking on.
Might be worth reaching out to like Jarelli Insurance or one of the local insurance agencies and asking them. Because if I recall, like, for my business, I had to get. Did a package of insurance, as a business owner, you want to have insurance to cover your assets, right, and as a homeowner, you have insurance on your house for certain assets. And I feel like they wouldn't insure me for this if I didn't get that, like, the liability insurance was like a big one. Or it may have been an option, but it was like, you really need this if someone's going to come in and break their ankle in your. Critenza or whatever.
If you remember from the original board, uh, however many boards ago that made the first law, that enacted the first law. And when Dave Mirandi was mayor, that, they put this in here because there's, I remember I was at that discussion or in the audience. There's a lot of homeowners policies that don't, that's, you have to purchase a right, an S T R rider if you're going to be operating an S T R. Your, your homeowner's insurance doesn't necessarily cover it.
Right.
Some, sometimes, it depends on the company, sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't, that's why they wanted, one of the reasons why they wanted to put this in here, so you could. Show that you had this personal liability coverage and prove that your homeowner's insurance covers your S T R renters. Or covers your house or whatever, you know what I mean, like, they were worried about the same thing back then, that's why they put this in here, I think.
Do we end up having liability for issuing a permit where then something bad happens? And then there is an insurance, like, could we actually be, is this something that would protect the village?
No, no, I mean, I don't, I don't see how the village could be liable unless they somehow knowingly issued a, a permit, um.
That no fire extinguishers or.
So, yeah, I mean, something like that, and even then, I don't know that liability would extend to the village.
But liability doesn't necessarily, that's not, just your practice, like, your only concern or whatever. So, for example, you're going to require inspections or building code compliance because of safe, because your concern is safety, just in general, of the public, like, public safety.
Um, Jonathan, you, so, you're kind of telling us, don't do this, this isn't, this isn't really. Uh, under your control and. Um. It doesn't, it's not none of the business of the vi- village to ensure that they're insured, that's your right?
Yeah, that, that's my thought, you know, um, just going back to like the, the workers' comp. There's some, there's a statute somewhere in the state law that says if you were running a landscaping company and doing business in New York, you have to have. Workers' comp, so in that case, the county or whatever municipality might. Require the landscaping company to show proof they're complying with that law, but I don't know that the village has the power on its own to just kind of come up with this new. Requirement that a property owner have general liability insurance.
I guess if we don't really have anything to stand on, we don't really have anything to stand on.
I mean, we could definitely do a deeper dive on it, but, um, that's my thought and, and John thought the same thing.
Perhaps, to, the, the other way to go about it is. To make the requirements. You know, before, before you pass getting, getting a permit to. I don't, like, to include additional requirements to make it, to make the situation, you know, less. Simply safe as possible, I mean, obviously you can't account for like, someone breaks their ankle tripping, I mean, that can happen anywhere. But maybe there's some way of getting at the. The essence of what this was trying to do in a way, but doing it in a, in a different way by acquiring. Other hoops to jump through in terms of getting a permit? I don't know if I'm being clear, but like, you know, if one of the things that we're requiring, requiring is, you know, the building. Inspector to go, you know, that they, they, instead of, you know, for them to look at additional things versus just like. I don't know, whatever our list is, I. Also, we could look at the safety requirements or like.
Yeah, and make sure that it covers. Well, also, the, the only thing I was thinking that worked, I mean, like, for example, where the public interest was, which is your purview here. Will come into play, it's like, I know Airbnb and several of these companies, they offer some kind of coverage. You know, there, there's some, there's all these different coverages, scenarios, but let's say a, a renter was staying at someone's. Short term rental and they threw their negligence, burned the house down. And the, the Airbnb rider covering that didn't cover it. And the homeowner's insurance said, no, that was a short term renter, that's not covered under your homeowner's insurance. So what if it burned the house down and it damaged the neighbor's house? And, because that happens and we're so close together, it's happened a few times since I've lived here, where it damaged the neighbor's house when the house burned down. Well, then, at that point, it is like a, I don't know, the public, if nobody, if there's no personal liability coverage there. Um, that is maybe a public interest, so that might be a question there, I mean, that is an interest of the village, it's like very narrow and what if, what if, what if? But that was the only thing I could think of.
I want to reach out to Jarelli and see what they would advise on things like this, if this is something that's come up, I think. They might have some ideas of like, how it would work from that end. And then maybe Jonathan, if you could just dig a little bit deeper, we really need this to be safe, and I think people should be covered. So if there's any way, please help us find it.
Yes.
Okay, so the next question for him was, in, in relation to inspections, um, so in our section. Our draft section, um. Oh, it's not in here, sorry, in the.
What, what, one hundred dash five?
Yeah, in one hundred dash five, in the, in the law that's currently on the books right now, um, you know, there's a requirement that the person applying. For the permit submit to inspections by the code enforcement officer for fire safety, basically, um, in order to get a permit. And, uh, there's been a few, it was summarized in that, like, uh, short term rental case law in New York thing that was circulated to you guys. There's been a few cases where those, those mandatory inspections data permit were, um, ruled like warrantless search. Because, um, you. You, it, because of what Jonathan was talking about, there's this gray area between a short term rental being a business and a private residence. So as a private residence, it has very strict first, uh, fourth amendment protections. You can't, police officers can't just come into your house without your permission, so making it a requirement to get the permit is. Questionable and has been, um, successfully litigated in a couple of places so far. Not, it, it is a requirement in most of these laws. So the question I asked him was, one, that, um, article that, that John first office shared that suggested. You could make like a certified affidavit from a. you could make like a certified affidavit from a licensed engineer um, substitute for submitting to an inspection. So people that didn't want to submit to our, the village officers fire and safety inspection could submit a something notarized. Report by licensed engineer that hits all these points of the safety inspection. Like there's a whatever alarm in every, fire alarm in every room, whatever those points are as an alternative. Um, or they could submit to the, they could choose by their, it's probably a lot easier for them to just let the code enforcement, the, you know, let the village just spec their, for the fire safety. But that would, that's what's suggested by this document as a way to get around this challenge as a sort of the fourth amendment challenge. So I asked him about that. I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, I mean, I think generally speaking, it's, it shouldn't be an issue for um, the code enforcement officer to do an inspection as a condition of a permit. Now, if the code enforcement officer is doing random inspections, you know, with no clear health and safety purpose, you know, that, that might be a different story. That might get into some fourth amendment issues. But I, there's inspections, you know, whenever there's new construction before CVOs issued. So I don't think that in itself is necessarily an issue. Maybe in other states, under different laws, there could be issues that arise. Um, but I think regardless, it's probably, it'd probably be easier for the village to go with this other option of having the applicant retain their own engineer to do the inspection and submit an affidavit that way. Code enforcement officer, you know, doesn't have to take the time to do these inspections. Nobody can complain about this exact issue. So I think that's probably behooves the village to, to do it that way.
Interesting. Um, and they would have to, the inspection would occur each year to renew, like at the renewal as well?
The two-year term on the.
Two-year, okay. So every, every two years.
Were we recommending inspections for the unhosted, one-time applicants as well? I vaguely recall that might have, that was a discussion, but I don't know where we landed on it.
Well, you, I actually just looked at this part of your meeting. So yes, you talked about it on your May twenty twenty-two meeting. And I think you guys were, you sort of tabled it. You were wondering if you could not have it required for the one-time short-term rental. It's not, unhosted rentals are going to be illegal in the village. If you pass these recommendations now, there's not going to be any unhosted except for this one-time STR.
That has a.
That has a very limited.
We haven't identified separate application tracks. So the, the one-time would still be subject to all the requirements of.
Okay, I mean, it seems like you should have, it is substantial, but like for safety, I don't know how, if you're issuing a permit. I mean, this is my personal opinion, not the, the ad hoc kind of, I don't understand if you're issuing a permit, how you could have different standards. Just because one is for a little short sign and one is for all year or whatever.
Well, yeah, I mean, it sucks, but I don't. It totally sucks because of the amount of extra work and burden it'll put on our for, for code enforcement or building permit, referring process. Um, so that could be difficult. If there was a form that the applicant had to have certified and go through with either somebody, an engineer or a building inspector, it could be already a building inspector that could request it. But I, I like the idea of the flexibility of like, there's the form, you're going to have, you know, these things here. Like somebody's going to go through and do it, like, but make it standardized.
The village of like Placid or whatever, North Elba, what they're, what they're called, which is a similar size, the village, not the town of like Placid. The village is similar size to us. It's, you know, it's six hundred something housing units or whatever. Um, they have that, what you're talking about, like you could submit a notarized letter from an engineer or something like that. As a way to, to document that, shorten the process or maybe take the, I don't know why they have that, but they, they, there is examples of this being required in New York state by other, other laws. So.
You'd have to, I think we'd have to have two different permit fees potentially, like the cost, the cost of the, for the building inspector is a lot. Right? Especially for doing the, the, for the unhosted, to be doing all of those um, inspections. And then it's so doing, I'm, I'm not articulating this very well, but like, so you would imagine that there would be a higher cost for the permit fee if they have to do inspection than if they go to an outside engineer.
Would just be built into the permit fee structure, which we were going to do anyway.
Because otherwise, I think we'd have to charge, I just feel like we'd have to charge a lot for that unhosted permit in order to cover the, the building inspector's time and it might not make it worth it for someone to host for a week if they have, I don't know.
So you'd probably have a lot of people who just want to go away for Christmas when they're just doing it.
Yeah, not.
Without the permit. However, I would suggest that the idea of requiring a permit for everyone operating a short-term rental, whether it's a one-time permit that we're talking about, that all, all the village houses have would be allowed to do, or the other one, is because that one-time permit is going to be used as cover for enforcing the one, the other one that we're more worried for, the village is more worried about. So if some, you know what I mean? If you, another option you could have is people who are doing a one-time vacation rental don't have to have a permit. That was one option the art committee considered. And it's actually what I think a few of, maybe like village like Placid requires. So you don't have to have a permit if you're just doing less than fourteen days, one time a year. You had to call in, yeah, you have to put it on a registry list. And I think you had to sign an affidavit saying we have smoke detector.
What would be the incentive for anyone to do that if there's no permit, there's no enforcement?
There still wouldn't be an incentive, but your, your problem is going to be bad actors running short-term rentals all year. So hopefully there would be hardly any of those. But would, should you have a bad actor running a short-term rental that is not a good operator? Like that fall to fall a lot of the goals that we're trying to protect in this code. Um, that person could often get caught doing something and say, oh, well, I was just renting it for my one time for fourteen days. And you know, oh, I was, you know what I mean?
If you didn't require a permit. Every single month for the entire year.
Well, it would require the enforcement officer to come back and document that it's more than one month. It's really hard to enforce. If you have certain kinds of this activity going on without a permit and certain kinds of it going on with the permit. That was the main issue between the two. Not like, I think most people on that, this is just, I'm speaking for the ad hoc committee. We're not worried about, it seems like the general village temperature was hardly anyone's worried about. All of us participating in this short-term rental activity, every single house in the village, one time a year. That didn't seem to meet the, you know, changing residential neighborhood character, noise or that sort of thing, problem. But so nobody really wanted to have a permit for those, but there's no way to like, am I making sense to you guys?
Yeah, no, no.
It can be used as a workaround for a bad actor in this, uh, that were, that's has a, in the more valuable permit that's operating business all year or whatever, like is the problem.
Yeah, the permit process kind of keeps it regulated and keeps everybody like in line. I wonder if to reduce the burden of inspections, if it was like for these one-time folk, you get inspected once every five years, something like that. So like if you go away once a year, every year, but you got inspected the first time you applied. If you didn't do it every year. I don't know. I mean, that was, we discussed that before too. Like, because the risk is so much lower when it's only a two-week window versus like all year round. So it, it's, it's a, it's a, of course, anything can happen, but it's, it's a like much more finite risk in that situation.
Well, I wonder if you could legally have a different standard, like a couple of communities that we researched literally had the owner that applied for the short-term rental permit. Um, just ha- ha- they had a form that the village gave them that was the checklist of, I started, I myself certified that I have a smoke detector in each room. I have a blah, blah, blah. Each window is the size in the bedrooms. You know, whatever the fire code states, signed the owner, that gets notarized. It was like very easy for the owner to just, I mean, I guess they could lie, but just to fill that out. That was the requirement in some communities for instead of submitting to a village inspection by the fire code officer. So could you have that for this one kind of one-time rental and a more stringent inspection for the other? Or is that not okay?
Well, then my question about that is, you know, let's playing, you know, devil's advocate on that. What's the incentive to, for the person to get the bigger permit then? Because you could do it, I mean, they're sort of gambling on the fact that we're going to be enforcing or not enforcing or what, whatever they think is going to happen in terms of getting away with something. So like, I don't, I don't see the incentive for a person to do, to get the bigger permit if there's an opportunity to get the shorter permit and then just do it.
But the shorter permit is date limited. So you have to tell, you have to register with the village the dates that.
But I'm saying like to even do, like to do any of it then. Like why, why, why put yourself through any of this?
Because there's really strong fines.
Right. And also the incentive is, is your income. I mean, if you can rent your house out three hundred and sixty-five days a year and fund your kid's college or whatever it is, you need that for, you have, whatever. That's a huge incentive. So you would want to get your house inspected. So you have that right.
Except that we know for a fact that people are, that with, there's like two, over two hundred homes that are doing it right now without a permit and it's.
That is not, that's not true. Kathleen said that in an email, but that is not true. There, there's not.
Well, I mean, there are, if it's a hundred or fifty, I mean, it's still, there's still people who are out of.
Do you have info on that?
So my research showed a hundred and eighty plus homes.
In the village of Cold Spring.
Burbow, Airbnb, kayak, and there's one other one. And I can pull them up.
In the village.
They were, so the two Nelsonville ones were on the border, but there were, it was a significant number. I took the date parameters off so that the ones that were booked would show, would still show and it was a lot.
Are you sure those were distinct?
I mean, I, no, I mean, I didn't do full data fidelity to see if like, it was nine rooms in one house.
I'm just, I feel like we should double check on that. I'm not questioning that, but I'm just, because this was a year ago, so it could have changed drastically in a year. But we did the same work and that's how we got, we set the forty permit cap recommendation. Because at that time, there were only thirty-three within the village of Cold Spring boundaries on all these different sites that were operating. So if there's now a hundred and something or two hundred, that's insane. And it's all the more reason that you guys need to figure out this law. But I, I, I'm skeptical because there's no complaints. There's no, it seems like it, it's not like it, the hot budget issue has died down. So if there was that, like for example, in like Placid, the village of like Placid, they, it was like crazy controversy and they went from having like something like forty-eight operating STRs to a hundred and forty in the span of, you know, a year. It was like, they, they were growing exponentially. It was a problem. But here it didn't seem, it seems like, so we should check on, I feel like we should check on that. I, I don't know.
This is what Granicus would do for us. I mean, this gives us the power to enforce. But then we have to have somebody in the office.
And they did do that. You guys know that, right? They did, do you have that? That might be something that had, was lost, which before you came. They did do that. That's where we got this number a year ago. So it might have changed since a year, but they did that analysis for us already.
Right. And, and I can't exactly remember how many it was total.
It was less than forty, because that's how we got this forty, I think. That, that's how we got, the ad hoc committee got this number as a recommender. It needed to be above what was currently operating. So it wouldn't be a huge problem.
It wasn't a huge amount that we're doing, like all year round.
Well, in fact, so back to the, to the point of whether of the requirements for the short, yeah, I mean, it would be my my instinct to require whether you're doing it as a for more than fourteen days or just the fourteen days once a year for Christmas or whatever, whatever your plan is, that there is a requirement for some sort of affidavit or, or a full multi-department um, inspection so that we have that information on file. And I think it should be every time you apply. Every year, because things change. Yeah. And, and I, and I don't think, you know, the, the, the point of this is to, is to create the guardrails. Because whether, I mean, we all hope that everyone in this village who's living here is well intentioned. But people decide to do things for reasons that we don't know. And, and so I think we need to be able to have something to to catch, to catch the bad actor. Hopefully there's not, and that would be fantastic. And then this is just, you know, the, the cost of doing, doing this business, which is not a right, but a privilege. And so, you know, I think that would be my, my feeling on that.
I, I worry about it becoming both too cumbersome for the building department or the inspector and um, in terms of like our ability to manage the workload. Even if we charge them for it, I, no matter how much money we have, we have, like, we don't have enough people. So I think that's a real guardrail that we have to, that we're running into. And then the other thing is what I thought, what I noticed with the code that's on the book right now. It was, there were so many hoops you had to jump through that I think that that was why the STR community disregarded it. Because it was too hard to meet the requirements and, and all of like, you know, like there's a lottery and there's all these different things that made it so hard to comply with. There is like, whatever. And what we want is compliance, right? We, and, and we want, we want them to have the checks, the boxes checked and to say that they've done the safety things that are necessary. But we don't want to make it so cumbersome that people like blatantly disregard it. Um, so what is the balance in between those things, right? Like.
I like the engineer, I mean, it seems like potentially that the engineer person is an in-between, right? It's more strong than the like affidavit that is easy for someone to either knowingly or unknowingly incorrectly you know, attest to. But it's not all in the building inspector. I don't know who the engineer, like I, I guess I, maybe we could find out from like Placid, if people use that, right? Maybe you know that.
They have the affidavit. They don't have.
Oh, they don't.
But I can find the communities that do.
Yeah. So maybe we could find out from there or if we know of, like who would that reasonably be? Does that exist in Cold Spring? Is there someone and like, what would that cost be? Like a little bit of, been seeing if it, if it's addressing one, if it's lowering one of the barriers. Um, because I agree too, like especially if we set the permit date as the same date every year, then there's like two hundred building inspection, fire inspections that the building um, inspector has to do. That, I mean, that's not going to happen.
Happen, yeah.
So that could be real problematic, right?
Administratively creating two separate tracks, one for commercial STR and one for privatized hosted day. Right? Like that's, that's a nightmare. Even if you're talking forty on this side, you have the variable rate on the other side. And we, we don't have a full-time STR person. So how do you streamline the process? So that that one person or the, the people that are reviewing those applications are overruled. Right? And, and that's creating something that's like homogeneous. Everybody submits the same stuff. And then you issue the permits based on what people are asking for, right? You issue your forty commercial permits and then the remainder of host permits, ad hoc, you know. And, and that's the other thing. Even those become burdensome during high-volume times. Everybody's going to go away for Christmas. That means that all of a sudden, you're going to have how many applications all at once for people that want to rent their house out. And how do you work through that backlog so that you're able to issue the permits in time enough for everybody to be compliant and get their? I don't know. I don't know. Just here, so knowing what we're working on on the permitting side. I'd say it's a, it's at least a five to seven business day review, review time, probably more than that. And so.
Just for, sorry, just for staff to review.
Not, not for the, that's like the application review, right? To be able to review the application, review any insurance documents if there are some. Review the residency requirements or the residency proofs that they're going to provide. Um, if they're not providing those residency proofs, going back and figuring out what is actually going, right? Like all that stuff takes time. You, and the volume that we're talking about is significant. So how do we, like, what is it? I, I don't know what it looks like, but I, I know it'll take a while. So how to, so creating separate tracks just adds to that workflow.
So your preference would be everybody has the same.
One homogeneous process, keep it streamlined, keep all the requirements the same and issue the permits based on what people are asking for. One homogeneous process, keep it streamlined, keep all the requirements the same and issue the permits based on what people are asking for. And if that means we're dropping requirements on one side or the other, so be it. Or, or we make all requirements apply to both classes.
Could you see if you can find any other info about it? I, I think it could be a real. I think the inspection piece, it's really important for safety, but it could be a real backlog and like a practical, a practical.
I mean, I guess another option, I'm not proposing this option, is you could just not have one-time STR permits. That, in, in other words, that's not a permitted activity, not permitted is the wrong word, not a, that wouldn't fall under. So it would be illegal, and is what I'm saying, just like all of this activity was not allowed in the village before. First chapter one hundred was enacted. They made it a, you know, a privilege. Some communities just outright ban STRs altogether and to, because they don't have any time or. Energy to do this or it's causing too many problems. So that was an option we didn't wanna do, but you could do that. Just have this one, just be concerned with this one kind of activity.
So the person who goes away for. Fourteen days.
Well, you have to risk doing that illegally.
All of those people who do the website.
I mean, I don't think it's really, nobody wants that. Also, it would make it really hard to, so Granicus or some of these other companies will crawl. Airbnb and um VRVO and stuff, and one of the. Important requirements of this law is that they have to list the permit number on their listing and it's, it's a violation of this law if they don't do that. So it's the. It's the way that you can have a computer enforce, you know, flag violators. So if, but if you had people advertising on there, that's how they would get. Caught, you know what I mean? So it's not like you're just allowing that activity under the rug. It's like you're actually creating a class, a category of violators, which is sort of sucks. But I just thought I'd mention.
Yeah, I don't think that's the way we should go, just given sort of the history of what. Happens here, which seems relatively harmless as it is. As in the fact they're not following the rules right now.
Well, the, you could maybe make a registry of, of um on-time. Hosts that, that just so, in other words, that would just, you wouldn't have to continue to inspect.
So when they popped on the first Granicus drag, then you checked them off for their fourteen days. And so each subsequent time that they showed up during like a website brawl, you'd then know that they were.
Well, they still have to be issued a permit, but the permit would be, okay, we have seventy-eight houses on our registry that have. Over the last five years have been inspected for one-time permits. And they just, if you've already been inspected and you're the same owner of the house, you're, it continues to be on that registry. So it'd be easy to, you'd pull a permit by. Telling you, you know, in writing or with the form, here's the dates this year that I'm using that permit, here's the date, you know, so it could be like a cumulative. Registry, you know, like that, that's, I'm just throwing out ideas here, guys.
I appreciate that. Do registries have permit fees or, or it? Maybe it's like a one-time B to B added to the registry and then after that you're on it, you don't pay.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting, it would make, you'd have to get inspected at that point and then. So that would cover a certain level of safety, it wouldn't be an annual or bi-annual inspection.
And then you'd just be somebody who had that right. You, you, you were on the, you've been registered, you've been permitted. And you have the right to do that once a year.
You, the property owner with. This, the property that you've already had inspected this. Right, the property owner changes, you'd have to, you'd go off, it'd be a new or whatever, but yeah, like you.
And the fines and the revocation of the right could be the same.
But I'm just trying to address Greg's concern would be, in that way, cumulative. Every time a person gets add, a, a property gets added to that registry with one owner, you wouldn't have to, to inspect or do all that again. It would be sort of like a renewal. A easy renewal process.
But how would we know if it was the same owner?
They would have to come back and register, right?
Still have to fill in a permit.
Every year, every, every time they wanna do that.
Their renewal.
Yeah, the permit would, for the, uh, the way we have it right now and you're, that you're editing is like, you would, you get the permit. For the one-time short-term rental at the same time as all these other permits are being issued once a year. Because it's created to have this lottery and all this stuff. And then, once you get that, that's called a clearance that you apply for, then you can. Apply for your permit for the exact days you're going away or you're doing the rental. For, you know, basically in, in an easy like online form or something, you just register the dates that, that you use your permit for that year. That's the system we have right now. Proposed, but I don't know if that actually gets around your concern here, so.
Um, it sort of does, right? Because then I'm just managing the registries on an annual basis instead of. Managing the entirety of a registration, right? The, the vetting is what takes time. And so if it doesn't have to be re-vetted, like the entirety of the application, you're probably a little bit better off or work volume wise. Um. Then it's just a matter of somebody matching up the dates and making sure that somebody doesn't register for more than one set of dates.
Right.
Right, um, which internally can happen.
Seems more reasonable, that seems like something that wouldn't overburden the. Your office.
It, it would, it would be a smoother workflow. Um, obviously the first time, like that first rush is gonna be what it is, right? But I'm just thinking about moving forward after that, if there's not that re, if there's not that reissuance of the permit process, right? And everybody just has to. Do the renewal and register the dates moving forward, renewal, register, renewal, register, then we can worry about the commercial forty. Or sixteen or whatever it's.
Well, and I have a feeling that those, the, the capped, um, you know, the hosted permits would, will be the same, a rush. If, I mean, if people actually comply, it would be larger at the beginning and the, the ad hoc committee was. Like positive or hopeful that um the system would prefer good actors. So if you've been. You've had your two-year permit and you didn't have any complaints and you're, then you can just renew it, you know, you, you know what I mean? Like it, it's a good idea for the village to continue to have. Same people operating the STRs that are doing it in a responsible way and the, and violators. You know, you go to the back of the line or you're, you're revoked, you know, just a system that like preferences people who are acting. You know, posting responsibly, which is most people. I mean, it should be, I agree with you, Eliza, that I feel like it should be easy. As easy as possible, not just for staff, but for, also for.
To get compliance.
To just participate in.
People don't follow rules, but they don't make some.
They, easy and rare. Okay, so inspections I have down, I'm gonna look up other, and provide you with examples of other communities that have an engineer, as Jonathan's suggesting, you might wanna just have. Either a licensed engineer. Form signed, submitted in lieu of having staff do it. Or you could off, offer a combination of both, like submit to a inspection by our fire safety code officer or this.
And then the false variation there.
Yeah.
Or inspector versus your inspector.
Right, it could be like a little checkbox, like I'll have the building, building inspector do it for, you know. Five hundred dollars or whatever it is.
Okay, um, so just moving along, there's two more questions that, for, that we had for Jonathan and then there's a few options. I don't know if we're gonna run out of time for today, but. Um, the next one was fines. Jonathan, that question was, um. We know that we have to just double check our permit fees, that they're sort of reasonably tied to cost of enforcement and staff time, et cetera. But what about fines? Can we, for violations? Do those have some kind of thing that we need to uh tie them to or can they be set? There are main deterrents right now for bad actors, that's why we're concerned about it.
Yeah, no, they could definitely be set as a deterrent. I mean, if you were to make them something crazy like fifty thousand dollars a day. Some court might find a reason to invalidate that, but um municipalities have a pretty broad discretion in setting fines. I mean, I know there's one municipality here in Orange County where it's a, a misdemeanor to park your car in your lawn and you can actually go to jail for it. Uh, I don't agree with that, but um nobody struck it down yet.
Are we required to follow any sort of civil process when levying these fines?
Uh, so it would be um a criminal process, so the building inspector would issue a, a criminal summons. The, that would require the property owner to come to village court and. So, you know, it would be subject to the same procedures as like a, uh, any other violation, like a traffic ticket. There could, I mean, you could have something in the statute too that says, uh, there could be civil penalties, but then you would have to. You know, follow the same process as um essentially if you were suing someone.
Trying to think of like not adding to an already overloaded court ticket.
Yeah.
Right, so like, can I just pay my two thousand dollar fines?
Oh, right, exactly. And I, and how many people are gonna wanna do that? But we think about how many one-time bad actors there could potentially be. Right? And now you're sending that volume down the, down the line to the court for, for finding force.
And you know, of course, you wanna make sure that the fine is uh enough of a deterrent that somebody doesn't decide it's. Worth the cost of doing business to just pay the bucks when they get them.
I think the numbers are pretty good where we have them set, they're pretty.
It's, but it's that plus you lose your permit, so.
I mean, if you don't have a permit.
First offense is a warning issue to the owner that the permit will be forfeited should there be a second offense, so you get two.
You get two, I can speak to this. So the law on the books now, like the, the chapter one hundred now. Has the fines as first offense, one thousand dollars, second offense, ten, two thousand dollars and one year suspension of your permit and third offense, five thousand dollars and four years suspension. We, the, we meeting the ad hoc committee talked about this a lot and were a little bit split. We felt like that. It needed more specificity and pretty much should be out of the running for getting permits. After a warning, whatever, a fine and a warning because, come on, like you're. But most people felt like it was important to have that first offense be. A hurtful amount of money a little bit for someone running a business. So a thousand dollars is what we're suggesting, which is the same as it is in the current law. And permit probation notice, which is like, you, you're in trouble, you're in trouble. One strike. And I actually disagreed with this personally, but I understood the logic of the people who agreed with this is that. It will encourage maybe unknowing bad, bad compliance actors or something to like have a second chance and. I mean, we're all like neighbors here, so whatever. And then the second offense would be two thousand dollar fine and you, you don't have a permit anymore. And then a third offense would divert to. You're operating without a permit now, so. Well, you, you have, you have no permit, so you'll have the um. First offense level, second offense level, like a loop basically. So those keep accruing, if you keep operating, it keeps accruing. Does that make sense?
Yes, but then. How do we enforce that? You know what I mean? Like, like, is there a lien on their house? Like, what, what can the court do?
We consulted the attorney on this, so that seemed like. We asked the specific question, like if you don't pay your water bill, what can the village do? And the village doesn't do any liens on houses or anything. What happens is, correct me whoever knows this, if I'm wrong, but you. It goes to the county, who then it goes through their system and they're the ones that can put a lien on something, basically. But we don't have any power in the village to do that and it was advised that that was not, okay, right, so, but Mr. First felt like. This, uh, this process that Jonathan just described, which is the summons process, um, you should have. I think you offer the building, the code enforcement officer. Issues a violation and then there's a way that the person pays the fine. Without coming, going before the court, they have to go before the court when they issue a violation.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Jonathan, but they have to have due process, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So, and then. That happens again, they, they have to come pay their fine, just like you do for a traffic ticket or whatever. Um, but for bad actors in that process, like let's say they don't appear. Or they, they don't pay the fines, they keep accruing them. I'm just like the worst case scenario, that person. Who is accruing those fines and those violations would be in the, able to be at some point arrested. So at the worst case scenario.
That's where we get the police.
Yeah.
It's a scalpel.
Because they would, I'll look it up in my email. I didn't understand it a hundred percent, but. It, it comes before the judge. At the point, do you, can you answer this, Jonathan? Your office is the one that advised me, I can't remember, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, it, it is a criminal violation, so potentially that could happen. I think in practice it doesn't, you know, people. One way or another, come to court and resolve it, but yeah, I mean, it is a criminal violation. And usually, you know, it might be a little bit trickier here, but usually with. Commercial uses, there's some component of it where um the C of O could be revoked or something to that effect too, that uh makes it difficult.
For residents? See, and this, this gets back into residents now.
Right, yeah. And that's my point, is it's a little bit trickier here than with a commercial use.
Okay, I, I just found it. This is John First's email. It's, it's just reinforcing what you just said, Jonathan. So if a property owner continues to violate the law by issuing the violations and fines, and the village does not wanna seek jail time. Which is normal for zoning violations, the village would have to seek a temporary restraining order. That's what I couldn't remember, T R O. From a Putnam County judge. This is again for worst, super worst case scenario actors. Once a temporary restraining order is signed by the Putnam County judge, the police enforce it. If the property owner continues to ignore the judge's T R O, then he or she can be arrested for violating a court order as opposed to violating a zoning violation. So the, does that make sense?
Right, yeah. Um, do we need to lay that kind of thing out?
I think we probably do in the enforcement chapter, just for us to be clear.
Really like, this is what happens if this happens, so it just nails it down. Okay, so it's not really clear right now, but it could be.
Right, so that's like the backstop question. That is like the ultimate backstop basically. I, I honestly don't.
We're not gonna get there, but you just want to make sure that people don't get there.
Yep, yeah.
Um, can I ask about, it's not one of the questions, but it's in this section. Um, but under the penalties for non-compliance, the first offense, um. It's a thousand dollars and they must ensure that the offense is corrected. And then the, the timing of it was crossed out. There used to be like within ten days. Uh, there was a deadline. Uh, and there's no more deadline. And it seems like. You need a deadline, otherwise they could just keep saying that they're fixing the offense and just kind of. Yeah, um, and never, it never graduated to the second offense. So I wondered. If you knew about the removal.
Since it's been so long at the time, I can't remember why that got removed. It might have been an effort, but I can go back and check on that.
Cause that makes sense to others that we should say when they have to fix the offense by, yeah, so it happened ten days, which seems like a reasonable thing to say.
It might, that might have been an effort.
And I'm thinking back, there is, I hope I read, I hope I read the, um, the copyright, so. Go back and look at the, the crossed out version that I. Yeah, well. Clearly it's.
Right. Um, okay, so that's fine and I'm gonna put down, I'm doing a backstop better. Uh, okay, and then the final question I had for Jonathan or I, the mayor had and I wrote to him. Is um about the parking impact fee, number five in the email that I sent you. Um, in our. New zoning code or whatever, uh, updates, updated zoning code, um, properties in the B one district are allowed. With a special permission by the planning board to pay a parking impact fee as a way to reduce the number of parking spaces required by code for. A special user and activity. Um, in our current zoning code, there's no language for that in a residential district. Which is like preference for it, there's no language for it. Um, so like if you're building a house in a lot, a residential district, you can't. You have to comply with the parking requirements of the, the zoning law. You can't pay this parking impact fee. As it's written right now. Um, so the question was, uh. As you guys know, because you talked about it a while ago, that in March of twenty twenty-three, the STR law current, the one on books right now has a parking requirement of one space. as you guys know, because you talked about it a while ago, that in March of twenty twenty-three, the S T R law current, the one on books right now has a parking requirement of one space per bedroom, similar to the requirement we have for hotels in the village. Um, in order to mitigate the impact of business guests taking up parking spots on residential streets, et cetera. Um, you guys discussed on, in March, the idea of fee in lieu of that requirement. Um, we, the ad hoc committee recommended reducing the one per bedroom to one parking space off-street per permit. So not counting it to the bedroom, so it lessened it a little bit, but it still kept it because there was a large concern about picking up this public resource, which everyone knows like things that people fight over a lot in the village. And it is a public resource that people on a street use for their own mothers that come visit or their own cars or et cetera. And some streets have a more of a problem with this than others, et cetera, different throughout the village. So the question for Jonathan was um, since the, this doesn't match up, the village, the board discussion in March twenty-third, uh, twenty twenty-three was you could pay a fee of seven hundred and fifty dollars, I think you guys put it, in lieu of the parking requirement. And that would allow people without off-street parking to participate in this privilege or whatever. Um, and the question was, does that, is, would that run afoul of something because it doesn't line up with anything in our zoning code? And since your discussion, we now have this residential parking permit program, and how would that work? Is that legal to do there to get, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I think it, it does kind of run afoul to the, the legislative intent behind the um, the parking impact fees. Cause really the idea behind those was that on Main Street, people are more likely than not, not going to be parking there all day. They're gonna be there for a shorter amount of time. They're gonna be taking the train. They're gonna be going in and out of businesses. And, you know, Main Street is what it is. You can't, can't just pretend that there is parking for all these businesses. So the parking impact, impact fees is kind of a way to um, you know, al- allow the, the status quo to continue on Main Street. But I think here with short-term rentals, you could have properties with no off-street parking and guests that are coming and parking on the street for the entire weekend. So I think it kind of, it runs contrary to the intent of the, the impact fees. I think, you know, the answer is probably if the property doesn't have off-street parking, then it, it can't support short-term rentals.
Is there any way that that would make a issue for the village? Like, is there any bias there? Is, is there any way that somebody could come at us and say, I don't have a driveway. I don't live in an area that has a problem with parking, like this is not fair.
No, I mean, I don't think so. You know, there's bulk requirements for every property in the village. You have to have certain setbacks. Um, you know, you can't have a four thousand square foot house on a five thousand square foot lot. So I think it's kind of the same idea as that. And on the flip side, I think um, somebody on Main Street could say, well, wait a minute, why do I have to pay this parking impact fee when you know, it doesn't really seem to serve any legitimate purpose if anybody can get one and park on village streets for days at a time.
Still allow for you have to, um, like pay for a, like identified an off-site but secure parking space, the event of parking space around, like providing proof of off-site parking, not on your property, but on like a rental contract that you rented.
Yeah, I mean, I think as the way the, the code is written now, it has to be within a certain number of feet or adjacent, and you have to uh, provide proof. But yeah, I, I think that you could, you could probably implement something like that.
I mean, the five, you know, you and I are disagree on this, so I'm just gonna lay that on the table. I feel strongly about this personally because the the parking situation in the village is very different depending on who you are. So if you're on one street where there might be six short-term rentals on that street and suddenly all of the street parking is taken up by short-term rental guests, it impacts you really differently than if you're on a street that has none or something, or a street closer to the busy area versus, you know, it's like, there's no way to like even out everything.
They're no longer doing two hundred foot rides, so.
And also, how does that also affect permits? You know, like I, well, generally, people are gonna be coming on the weekends. I don't think a person who's visiting should get permit to park on my block. Like, I don't, I don't, don't think that's fair. Like, that, that is an impact that I'm now for someone else's business decision, whether, whether it's right or wrong, and whatever it is that they're doing, I don't think I should be impacted by their decision.
Well, the problem we have is finite resource parking, so you guys need to be careful about how you give it away. And the ad hoc parking, the short-term rental community felt like that was it was pretty clear that if you were, not the majority, not everyone, that if you were providing off-site parking, that impacted a lot because your guests are parking there. Now, somebody might have, a lot of short-term rental laws are much restricted in this. You have to have one parking space per bedroom off-site on your property, which is pretty much a small building, so eliminate all those studies for participating. So this seems like a happy medium acquiring at least one per permit. Uh, understanding that some people will have people on the train. You know, it's like we're an unusual village in some ways, but it was a happy medium, I guess.
So there's actually.
Off-street somewhere.
Yeah. Right. Right, and the, the, to, to respond to your point, the idea is that all the villages, all the properties in the village are not gonna be able to have this much.
Forty available.
And, and people who have a small house. They paid uh X amount for their small house and they, it only has one bedroom, and they're not gonna be able to pay because you have to have a person living on site.
Right, well, one of my big concerns originally was the, the, the parking spot in the backyard, but I think the new code update prevents them from doing that, so that concern is canceled out. I mean, that was like, I just don't want that to start. So they can do their best to get. Um, so I think I can go along with this new approach, whole approach, this new approach. And like requiring one spot, because it is inconsistent everywhere and you can't really like.
Is it also an option to say if you don't have that you can't pay any, and that's your.
Yeah, that's what they're saying.
Period. Yeah, okay, sorry.
You have to prove it. It's part of the inspection. You have to prove you have an under, under eighty square foot space.
You could rent it elsewhere, although there are a whole lot of rental spots available.
That's kind of, I, I, sorry, I should clarify. Like, that that, that because, cause we couldn't, I, well, one, but also like, you know, the, the opportunity to um, for, let's say, parking at, well, just like the N T A lot, that doesn't count, but like the winter parking or whatever, you know, near the um marathon site and stuff like that. Like, I wouldn't, I mean, if people wanna park there, that is still free.
Public, but yeah, this would be like, like the parking lot that's unfair.
Or how.
Yeah, there's.
It's a beautiful lot.
Rent, no, 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 like the private, there are like some private lots where you can rent a space.
There's, there's.
And then, yeah, like, oh.
You own people's property.
Right. Yeah, it's like, uh, oh.
So if you rented one of those.
Yeah.
But there, I mean.
The money is low. I just feel like it gives some ki- if there's someone who really wants to do this and they can figure out a way, it gives some kind of flexibility to circumstances.
Well, so, is that person where they just like, I don't have a driveway, but I live five feet from the train and all of my guests always come by train. They could go to what's the zoning board and ask for a and they, no, we discussed that as an option, but it's really not.
Appeals are to the village board?
Right, and they could appeal and be like, I have these circumstances. I live in this location. It's not really a problem here, and the board can consider it or not, you know? But I think generally, if we make the rule, like you have to have one off-street parking within.
Or you could, I mean, just, I'm just retelling here, you could, and some other communities have made a different requirement for S T Rs depending on the zone that they're operating in. So for example, you could have a different requirement for S T Rs operating in B one than you do in R one. I mean, it's mostly like, as Jonathan was saying, like B one districts are the reason you have this parking impact fee possibility is because the use of the parking is way different than in the residential districts. So you could, I mean, there are plenty of examples where, like, like class, I keep saying like class, there are another one. They target um, requirements to the S T Rs depending on where, what zone the property is located in. Um, and the reason for that, I think, was the opposite of what we're doing here, which is trying to be more lenient. The reason for that is they wanted to make sure in the residential zones that they had, definitely had one space per bedroom and off-street. You know, you, they wanted to make it more constricted in zones that had less, that were parking was more scarce of a resource. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
But in the, but in, in our circumstance, we have metered parking in our B one.
In practice, they would get a, a, a temporary tag and, and that car would go into the residential district.
Yeah.
Like in practice, I think of that.
I, I don't like that.
Well, hold it. So that's, I, I think that isn't right.
Yeah.
For, for the posted, but what about the unhosted? Like, you know, I've gone for two weeks. I'm renting out my place.
Can we please call those one-time?
One-time.
I guess not.
Like the unhosted was the biggest controversy.
Yeah.
Right, okay, one-time, one-time only. Like, I have a one-time contractor and my grandma comes one time a week and I have my hang tag for that person.
And what happens to that hang tag?
Is that currently what the village has? You issue hang tags for guests?
Temporary, in the resident zone, we enter temporary passes. We issue temporary passes. Typically, they have an expiration date. They're tied to the license plate of the vehicle that they're issued to.
So it sounds like no matter what you do right now, you're gonna have to have different parking requirement procedure or whatever for operators in B one or in certain districts in the village, because you have different parking programs.
But not if. Not if we're required to have a parking space.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, right. So if they're all just required to have one off-street parking.
Yeah. It means that the owner's gonna move their car to the street, and so there's still gonna be an impact on, even in that case, there's still gonna be an impact to the street for for houses that only have one parking spot, right?
But in theory, that's, that's less than, but also that person, like if they are on a residential permit parking street, they have the permit. And at least then, you know, like they're.
Part of their right.
And their neighbors know them, and it's different than like.
And they're participating in a, it's sort of the bigger
Thing.
The bigger thing of our community versus people who are just coming for a weekend. Just having, getting that access that we are all paying for and actually fighting on a weekend.
I mean, that is that you're allowed to park your car on the street, even if you have a parking spot right now, so it's without shame, and maybe.
It's depending where you live.
Where I live, we try to park in the driveway, so people, tourists can park on the street, but like, you know, I mean, you're already allowed to do that, so it's not.
That's right.
But I think you raised a good question of, do we, what about the one-time? And, and do we wanna add this requirement for, uh, for the one-time permit as well? What do we?
What's the requirement?
Yeah, for all, for all permits. Everybody's gonna have a spot.
Um, I guess I, I wish it were a little more lenient for the one-timers, but I can go along with the like, you must have the requirement for a parking spot for anyone who's doing it all year round.
I also think it's taking a caution, like the precautionary approach at the beginning and seeing how it operates is, I think, easier than going the other direction than taking back something like a privilege that was given. And so if we start with this of like, let's see how it operates with these strong parking requirements, um, um, gives us I think, I, I'd, I'd prefer the precautionary.
Well, again, this is a lowering of the parking. The current parking requirements are one parking space per bedroom. And you're.
Right. That's just prohibitive.
I, yeah, I think this is a little reasonable.
Taking that to allow reasonable participation, but I think it is eliminated. There's lots of people in the village that don't have a driveway, let alone a parking space, so eliminating those.
But I think most of those people live right here in the most concentrated, most traffic-heavy, most parking burdened area, and so it's like, sorry, you know, you live in this part that like, we just don't have enough parking here to do that. So I, I think that's, I think that's fine. I think we should go ahead with that.
Okay, so Laura, you're suggesting like, keep it as amended now, one, one per, for all permits.
One, and then if it seems to be problematic to, for the one-time holders, we could.
I think we'll reassess the whole program in the same way that we did with zoning, right? We, in parking, we reassessed the whole program. But that, I just think that it's easier to, I think it's harder to take away privileges once you've given them, and so it could be hard if we add a very expansive, a very permissive parking requirement to then, to then claw back.
Right, yeah. Okay. So that makes sense. Okay, well, so that sorry, Tracy, that goes, that goes over all the um, questions that we had for the attorney, right? At this time, unless there was some that came up with you guys' review. So this was like the pre, the pre-question.
And I think based on our, the other list, the only thing that we didn't cover was the shared driveway. Um, the permit, permitting process, which we sort of touched on, but I think obviously, we're working on that. Sort of needs more massaging. Sorry, enforcement.
One question. Um, I didn't hear if you guys said that we're doing the one-time has to have off-street parking as well? Is that where you guys?
Yes.
Are you with it?
Yeah, same requirement.
Everybody?
Yeah.
Um, there was also a question about which zones it was allowed in, um, given the new zoning map.
Oh.
Yeah, that was just basically a translation, which I think I updated it to have the zones.
And you'd asked about mommy and family, so it's weird.
Oh, yeah, that's true. And accessory units, that was like the thing, and yeah.
Do we, do we need to cover all of these tonight?
No, it's our, it's our plan.
No, I mean, I think you know, the, the, the idea here was to to reengage in this process and to start, you know, trying to hammer out um, the remaining issues. Obviously, we still have a fair amount of remaining issues and we, there was no there was no requirement to get through all of them this evening. I think we, we've made a good dent, um, and um, we can just plan to continue the discussion with, obviously keeping in mind that we wanna get it done.
Um, I think it's great that we resolved the parking questions. I remember that as kind of turning us in circles for a while and, and it's a lot because we've resolved the.
So maybe.
But that, that's a good point for tonight.
It is a good point. And maybe related to that, we should do the shared driveway piece because the, the other things are kind of separate. I mean, the shared driveway is connected to the parking in my head.
Right.
The, what to do about.
Shared driveway, so is that like one entry, but then it can go off and have parking over here and parking over here?
You know.
Like, like a driveway, yeah.
So there's like an easement usually situation. So if somebody owns that driveway, but there's an easement for the neighbor to use it, right? Or something like, it's all different.
It all, every situation is completely different. And our, that is not the case with ours. We each I don't know how people came up with these things. What, what certainly wasn't us, um, but functionally, like we, we both own and it does split off. And there is obviously this section of, that is the shared space that we sort of
Maneuver.
Maneuver and trying to manage. Um, and I think that uh personally, I think in this, in these cases, certainly we don't wanna be involved in having, you know, being in between two neighbors having this debate. And I think the, the cleanest, the cleaner way is to just make it that, you know, a shared driveway situation is not a permitting.
Probably close to.
It, it is. I mean, and there are not a lot of. I don't know how many shared driveways there are in the village. I've never done a count. Seems like a miserable thing to do, but. I would think that it's probably just easier just to, that they are not included in.
So can I just, I have this email from John first. Can I summarize this sort of two options that he was proposing to you guys? One was you could leave. It in that shared driveway holders could participate, like it's not in the language of the law. You would remove the section that's, um, right now, the section of the law says you can submit a signed agreement between you and the shared owner. As proof that you're allowed to use the driveway. Um, and he advised that removing that language would be prudent because it involves a village and a private contract and you don't wanna get involved in those. So you could just remove that language and not have anything about shared driveways in the law at all. And let, like I said earlier, let people participate depending on their own arrangements they make with their own neighbors. And if there's a dispute, they dispute it out. It doesn't guarantee, he says that the village wouldn't be pulled into that somehow, but it pretty much that you're not involved in it. So it'd be hard. So that would allow shared driveway holders in theory to participate in this privilege, but. Would leave open a lot of possible disputes. He didn't think that the village could be held liable for not. Like for, in that case, for much of anything. He can't guarantee it will absolve the village from getting pulled into that, but it makes it less likely, basically. So the other option would be eliminating it altogether, which has, it would, he says, yes, that's an option and it would avoid the whole issue. So putting in the law, something that says shared driveway holders are prohibited from getting an S T R permit. Or something about a factor, maybe the opposite language would meaning that. Um, however, he's, he wonders if someone could claim an equal protection violation. Since the focus of the village should be on access. Safe access and adequate access regardless of ownership, so shared or not shared. This is an ownership question again. But that may be a tough argument for the property owner with a shared driveway to make. So it, it's sort of a little bit of a long shot thing, but. You know.
Yeah, I think the, the way it's written now is problematic just because um. If the, the neighbor decides they don't want this access for renters, uh, the village has to. Pull the permit and I think that's probably not something the village wants to be involved with.
Like how would they prove that? Neighbor's gonna be writing letters, like and the village is gonna be judging something that we don't, they don't know what the agreement is or the.
Obviously ever wanna get involved in what will ultimately become very. Those are the deadliest.
Jonathan, do you have any additional feedback on the two options that John laid out?
I tend to think it's better to just, um, you know, avoid addressing it. Because I think if you prohibit shared driveway owners uh from having S T Rs, I could easily see somebody saying, well, you know. What's the difference between my driveway and a non-shared driveway? They have the same amount of parking. I have an easement. You know, I have a, a right to, to use this driveway and so do my guests and licensees, so. You know, how can the village say that I can't rent my home when I have all, you know, all the rights to, to use that driveway?
Good question for you, um, on that note, so what about? I mean, I'm not using my example, but just like a shared driveway example of like, what if I as a homeowner? Now have to deal with, you know, different vehicles and people. Because in a shared driveway situation, your homes are really close, right? So. Now I have to deal with random people coming in and out all the time through in, in my driveway. I didn't. I didn't sign up for that. You know what I mean? Like I didn't, that's not, that seems kind of unfair to the person who is sharing the driveway.
Creeps is gonna do the village.
Yeah. Well, right, because I'm like, you know, now I'm living next to. Yeah.
So this is what I asked him about. I think maybe it's in your email chain, Jonathan. John first said, um, he suggested perhaps adding language that the village's issuance of a permit for an S T R. In no way implies that the proposed S T R is compliant with any existing private access easement rights. The applicant may or may not have, as the village is not interpreting or determining those rights, like add, like make it clear that. Add some language that makes it clear that the village is not.
Responsible for that problem.
And it would make it less likely that you could be sued about it, like.
That the village could be sued.
Basically, you, you need to have some kind of requirement that they attest that they have the right to do this, they, the person applying for the permit. So if they lie on that, you're not liable because they attested that they have this right. But you could also go further and say, make it clear that just because we're granting you this permit, doesn't mean that we agree that you have the right. You know, we're not interpreting your property lines or your easement rights or whatever. We're, we're interpreting what you're telling us that you have the right to do.
So then for the person who's sharing the driveway, what is, what is? What recourse do they have then? They have to sue that, sue their.
I mean, you know, I, I feel like it's a similar position you're in that I'm in with no driveway. Like it's very personal, but like. Like sometimes you have to just. Go with the rules that is set up by law, like if. To pass through, then there's rights to pass through.
But the difference here is that in the part, in the case of the parking, we're talking about like a public resource. That then not everybody has the same property and here we're talking about interpreting someone's access, like which is private. I don't know, sorry, Jonathan, I interrupted you, but.
Yeah, no, and I think another way to think about it is, you know, let's say somebody owns a home with a shared driveway and they're not renting it, but they just have. Uh, a bunch of creepy friends over all the time, who they allow to park in the driveway and there's weird people coming and going. You know, if they have access to, to their driveway, they can pretty much let whoever they want to use it, use it.
Sure. That is, that's true.
Yeah.
But then, but there, I'm just thinking about the other things like, you know, checking in hours and all that stuff, like it becomes kind of like. I don't know, it's an impact, yeah. I don't, I feel like it's kind of like a. It's a unnecessary. Uh, because I guess then one. Would, I don't know, like he didn't, he probably didn't buy, I don't know why people buy their homes, but I mean, like. I'll use my example, I didn't buy my home with a shared driveway, thinking that I would be living next to somebody who was gonna. Get, do an S T R. I'm not, I'm not, I'm just using myself as an example. I'm not saying that this is semi, but, right. And that's not part of why I came to Cold Spring, why I bought a home here, why I live here. I grant that that person is free to do. What they want and if we have a permit to do it, it gives them that right, but I feel like that's sort of like. Taking away from the, the. The reasons why we chose to live here versus. Living someplace else.
I just wanna clarify, what is the concern about just, oh, just prohibiting people with shared driveways from participating? What's the, why can't we do that? Why is, what is the concern?
I think it's the, the potential equal protection claim that they're saying that, um. You know, as long as they meet the other parking requirements, what is the, the difference between a shared driveway and a driveway that's all on one property? Cause you could have a, a driveway that runs right between two homes and it's. Somebody's car door is slamming right next to somebody else's bedroom window, but the driveway is all on one property, so it's not a shared driveway. Uh, you know, are the, the privacy impacts really any different with a shared driveway than with someone?
Person is just annoying versus. Having like. Sure, of course, but, but a forced. Scenario of sharing some, sharing a, a common. Good, I don't know, common good, I'm now I'm just like throwing words out, but like.
We have, but like we have duplexes in the, and you know, houses that are attached to each other. And they will share a wall with the S T R.
I also have that.
Residents and we haven't put a prohibition on that. I, I feel like what we're trying to do with, with this program overall is to reduce the residents, like the impact on neighbors. But trying to also, but like recognizing that. The activity.
Yeah.
Will happen.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I, I hear you. I think that there's, like, there's also, I mean, I'll try to look at it for next time. In the new zoning code, it allows for home businesses. Um, it'd be interesting to look at the rules of it, but like that's a, like, that's an impact that is also happening with it, you know, and. I don't, I don't think that that's actually allowed, actually in home business. I think it's not supposed, you're not supposed to have like, um, clients come, but, um.
Probably exceed the decibel limit too.
This is the true case for you.
No, it isn't.
It does exist. Yeah, I mean. I think that in the spirit of. What we were trying, what, what this was trying to accomplish. I mean. Making it hosted, you know, trying to, to not create a situation where now it's just like. You know, people are buying here and living here or not living here or like, like taking away from the community which we are also. Protective of and like invested in, I think. I mean, I don't think this like blows that up, but I'm just saying, I think it's one of those things that is.
I mean, I, I.
Take away from other people's experience.
Yes.
I don't think. I don't think that's fair.
Another place with shared driveways is Marion, where there are like large houses that are further away, but. Uh, they are required to have shared driveway. So I think that the impact there, like you have it in like the dense village, but like there, the experience would be. Different too.
Yeah, there's one on.
Oh, yes, you're right, yes.
They were required.
One shared where the house is set way back, but it has a shared driveway with the house that goes for the road. Not so agreed. I think your situation is, is like particularly simple.
Yeah.
And it's only a few driveways with that chaos and that congestion. And one would hope that your neighbors would uh. I don't know, seems really specific.
It does, it is, it is, yeah.
But how is it different? Can I ask one more question, Jonathan? Sorry. How is this issue that we're talking about different than like Eliza's saying, like a house that doesn't have any parking at all? Like on their property, not being allowed to participate in this. It's not a right to participate in S T R. It's a privilege. It was illegal before this. So like there might be some cases where a house doesn't have any parking at all, but it exists right next to the. Village-run public parking lot that's never, you know, or something like that, that couldn't people claim an equal protection thing?
I think, I think that would be harder because if they have no parking at all, it's pretty easy to articulate why, um. There would be an adverse impact on parking, but I think, and maybe the way you, you word the code, um. You know, for most or maybe even all shared driveway properties, you could, um, if you articulated in a way that explains why shared driveways are. Problematic and create these impacts, um, maybe there is a way to do it, but I think it's a little bit harder there because the idea of a shared driveway. Could have really more to do with, um, ownership rights than actual physical conditions, if that makes sense. You could have a, a very large shared driveway that has lots of parking and really doesn't have any privacy impacts. And I see how someone in that situation could argue that they're similarly situated to someone who has a very small driveway. That's all on one property.
I can get what you're saying.
Isn't that why we have an appeals process?
Well, do we have an appeals process for these permits? Cause I think is the way, right now, the S T R chapter is a separate chapter from the zoning code. And unless there's something that specifically authorizes the Z B A to hear appeals. Uh, the Z B A wouldn't have the authority to.
Were you saying the village board? So you'd come before the village board and be like, please, 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 I can't survive. Because I have no driveway or because I share a driveway. And I've talked to my neighbor and told them like, I'm hosted, I'm here, I'll. Never park in front of your house and da, 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 like, you know, then they come before the board and the board decides. Like, alright, in your case, you found it out.
No way that the village board should be deciding that. It should be the planning board or something, some board that has. That has like a, a, their specialty is, is like they grant special use permits, they're looking at the whole picture, like. Not your friend on the, no offense to everyone, all the good bongers on the village board right now, but like, you know what I mean? Politics out of it. It should be like a planning board thing, but you're saying Jonathan, you can't do that if it's not in the part of the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, you, you could probably write it into the code so that the zoning board has that power, but you would have to do that first.
We also don't have, that would, we don't have any evaluation criteria for, for. A, as it stands now, it's just that they come before us and then we make some kind of decision, which sounds really, um, really difficult. And so the idea of it going before the Z B A is like a variance and they have to use the criteria to evaluate or something like. Have to build in some kind of evaluation criteria.
Of course, we're just talking about shared driveway.
Oh, no, I think, no, sorry, I mean in general, like I have, I'm concerned about that in general for like the idea that the appeals process just comes before us, full stop.
Well, I was thinking about that. This is like, can we just end on this and, and maybe like table it for next time? Like it does seem to me, I don't understand why this coded a separate chapter, like. Uh, the new, I read like line for line, the updated zoning, chapter one thirty-four. And they're granting special use permits for home businesses where there's all these new things that are new since I lived here that they're. That a special, I think special use permit is what is, is in there now. And this all seems like a special use permit, you know, it seems like it should be part of, they should be the board, not doing all the work. There, there needs to be funded by the, um, occupancy tax. There needs to be an S T R compliance officer, like for sure, cause it's a different thing, but the decision-making process on these special cases. They, it should be, it, I feel like it should be, that's how, how it is for everything, like they're looking at, is there enough parking in this case? Is there, I don't know.
I think that that does. That would be a, a better way to go about that bit of it, but.
Yeah, S T Rs kind of fall into like a weird gray area where it's not really clear whether. The activity is being regulated or whether the zoning use is being regulated. And here, it's not in the zoning code, so. You can really say it is the use being regulated.
But could you put it in the zoning code?
Yeah, I mean, some municipalities have it in the zoning code.
I know, that's what I'm, I'm asking, could you just put this chapter one hundred and roll it into our zoning code? And we're trying to make it, we have, we're like connecting all of it already. It, it derives its authority from our zoning code. That's how I understand it when I'm reading it and that's how all the case law talks about, you have to have it derive its authority from the land use from the zoning code. So why is it a separate chapter anyway?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can't answer that question. I'm not sure what the thought process was, but, um.
Thankfully, not start all over again.
Well, it might not be a start all over, it might just be.
I can, I can ask if there was a good reason, I can do that research because I did, we did that before we even made any recommendations. I talked to the administration that wrote the original law to see about that, like useful. But I don't, yeah, I think it would literally be, we have to amend chapter one thirty-four anyway, because there's a lot of things in there that don't comport with these new things. We have to ma- make these little amendments, but you could probably just put this as a, a section. That's how it is in several other codes. I don't know if it's in their zoning code, but it's in a section for like peace and good order, you know, it's in different.
One thing, um, my memory from Z B A was that getting an area variance was a more reasonable. Thing for the Z B A to grant than a use variant, like use variances were super hard to, to achieve. And so it'd be interesting to know if like an implication of. And so, it'd be interesting to know, if, like, an implication of putting it in one thirty-four is that like, that appeals process would be, like, what that appeals process would look like, or.
We'd have to ask the zoning board to share.
Yeah.
We're just spitballing here, yeah, like, for sure. But they wouldn't, the, the idea would be, we're at, we're talking about the appeals process right now, so the question is, can we just put can we connect the chapter one hundred as it is to an appeals body that is not the village board, but is the zoning board or the planning board, can we write that into this law? Or do we have to subsume this chapter into the zoning chapter?
So, I don't think you could have the planning board here in appeals, cause they just don't have those kind of powers. Um, but I think you probably could write something into chapter one hundred and chapter one thirty-four that empowers the ZBA to hear appeals on short-term rental permits, but I think that as someone mentioned, then you get into, well, what criteria is being reviewed, because for area variances and use variances, there's uh, criteria that come from the state law. But for short-term rentals, there's not something like that, so I think you then have to create criteria as well. And it doesn't necessarily have to be complex, but you have to give something to the zoning board to base their, their review and decision on.
Do you have to allow for appeals, like? Could we just like, this is our law, you don't fit it, sorry?
Um, well, I I guess it depends on who's saying that, if the building inspector is the one saying that, then the zoning board does have the power to hear appeals from any determination of the building inspector. Real, relating to the zoning code.
Renegation is the alternative to not hearing.
Yeah, it seems like appeals is like, appeals process would be in, look into it, some small. Could you limit, not just the criteria that the appeals body uses to judge the appeals, but could you limit what, what, uh, counts as, what criteria to meet in order for you to make an appeal? Or something like that, like.
I'm not sure I understand.
Like, like, appeals based on parking and driveways, you know?
Yeah, like what qualifies as.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
As a dealable, uh, application, like here, I'm just, you're only appealing shared driveways, you're only appealing, yeah, like whatever.
Right, some of, some of the, the criteria for getting a permit isn't um, really discretionary, it's uh, you know, you'd have to submit for the inspection, so you couldn't uh, appeal the requirement that you get a a fire inspection.
But, so the alternative is you could just leave it as the appeal process is the village board, which is the, the standard in like so much, so many of our chapters of our code. And they would just hear it on a case-by-case basis, I guess, but you'd have the same problem, I guess, maybe people. You'd have to do standards that they need to, you have to delineate standards that that body would use to judge it, and.
Right.
It would just be like.
And then in it, but, I'm sorry, I'm just going back to the shared driveway situation, but like, in the appeals process, like, would the other party have to also go in and be like, you know, like if I knew that my neighbor was coming in to appeal. Well, like, would I have to come in and be like, I'm.
You have to notify the surrounding owners, and then they have the chance to provide their feedback, and that's one of the considerations. So you could, I think you'd like have, you wouldn't be like summoned.
But you could delineate that in the appeals process here, like, but you'd have, the board doesn't have that in any of the other ones, like laws, uh, chapters here. But you could say, like, delineate a process, appeals process. It's still keeping it before the village board as the body, if you wanted to. I mean, I'm kind of walking back what I said before, I guess the village board is just as good as any, it's just like, they're. Well, they're time limited, they're time limited too, maybe it's better in some way, cause they're elected, so they have to be more you know, that your meetings are more open to the public or something like that, but the, the expertise for like judging impacts on a neighborhood and whether this is gonna impact, that seems clearly like it's the wheelhouse of the zoning board or the planning board.
Well, I thought that may be a good way to end the conversation, but apparently I was wrong.
We started with one thirty-four concordance, we're finishing with, why doesn't the zoning board just hear appeals?
Yep.
Seems, seems symmetrical to me.
Fair point, um, okay, well.
Before you end, can you summarize the outstanding things that you didn't get to, or that you guys do have? I have a multifamily, I think they said, accessory structure. I'm gonna put on there, um, Kathleen Mayor Foley in the, in her email was concerned about the cap at forty, and I was prepared to talk about that today because it's a very standard thing, and you don't have to have a lottery, and that was something we need to ask the attorney, but a lot of people have a cap without a lottery and a weight.
We've already said the lottery wouldn't work because, again, administratively, it's a mess.
I think she was probably just questioning the number forty rather than.
So the cap would be something to talk about next time, and I'm prepared to discuss that, and then was there some other things that came up in the commenting, like, and and you guys reading over at these?
I thought you said enforcement.
Enforcement was one of them, yeah.
In enforcement and that, that went towards the application process though.
I think so, although I suppose.
Well, we talked about that a little bit.
Yeah, I think we got through the enforcement bit, that was done, um.
We're gonna circle back to business entity, we're gonna circle back to, um. Personalized health insurance, both of those things, the attorney is gonna look at into a little bit more for us.
Yeah.
That, um, section, what is it?
That was section four, item L.
And the inspection, appetitive injuries and that.
And I'm gonna circle back with examples of the engineer required language or whatever in other ordinances. And then the chapter one thirty-four, uh, basically, there's a whole bunch of definitions that need to be adjusted, you think that something could need to change, there's some little things that need to be adjusted in each one, but that's more like a bullet point, non-controversial thing.
Right.
And um, deadline for first amendment. And the appeals process now, like. Okay, sure, let's.
Okay, well, I think that was a really good back, back in the swing of it, conversation. So.
So, did we mention, did we mention the um requirement that the host keeps data records? Records of how many people stay with them, and, and my comment was that
Right.
Our hotel, our occupancy tax would require them to keep some kind of record, but it's more about the amount of money, not the amount of people and things like that.
Right, I think that, I, we can ask Jonathan here, but I don't think he's prepared to answer it, but the record-keeping requirement, like uh, the way I understood it, it just has to be a, a request for business records, has to be reasonable and tied to something like collecting a municipal function, like collecting the occupancy tax, tax, or at the time that you issue a permit, it can't be like at, the language in the, in the law right now is like must produce when requested, or something like that, the business records, and that seem, that seems like it's a little bit too vague because somebody could just request that like every month, and that's like burdensome. Um, and that's where it gets closer to the fourth, to unwarranted search.
Right.
Because you're like.
Right, is that correct, Jonathan?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't think the village could say to someone, you know, give me a list of names of people who uh, rented the property.
But can, the way it says right now, they need to provide date, like occupancy dates and revenue, or whatever, to get.
The number of guests.
Yeah.
Beginning and ending dates of each short-term rental, so I had added in for the purpose of recording and collecting the occupancy, occupancy taxes, but those two factors are more about trying to like ensure compliance with, like, the limit of how many people can stay in the house, or how many days a year they can operate. I, I don't know, I don't know why there's dates, beginning and ending dates.
I think that might be a hangover from when we had, they, we have, we suggested to you guys to eliminate days of the year.
I think it should really be just revenue, I mean, they have to, they have to record the revenues so that they can pay their occupancy tax.
Yeah, I mean, even that might be kind of beyond the village's power, because if they, it's a requirement that they pay this tax, you know, either they're paying it or they're not, so. I don't know that they can necessarily be, you know, maybe there's a requirement that they show proof they paid it, but I don't know about just revenue necessarily.
Right, I mean, like, the, the government doesn't, well, you file your taxes and you have to show some records of the income you made to pay it, so.
Right, and so as part of our audit function, and our audit powers for occupancy tax.
Right.
We can ask them for revenue records or business records, but as they pertain to their sales.
That will, that will take care of it, it doesn't need to be here at all.
Yeah.
So I think that what has happened here, I'm gonna double check this, but it's a hangover from the previous iteration of, the current iteration of the law, and the one that we were considering still had a limit on the number of days you could rent.
Right.
Like, and which the ad hoc committee discussed as being a hundred percent unenforceable, because short-term rental, um companies like Airbnb and stuff, they're not required, nor do they ever want to share any kind of proprietary business info, or personal, private business info with municipalities, even though some cities have used their power to require them to do that, but we will never be able to do it, so, so suggested that we have a tight cap on the number of permits, but just let them, there's no way we can know how many days they're renting in. So I think that was a hangover from when there was like a hundred day cap, or two hundred day cap, or whatever, on the number of days.
Okay.
So probably we need to just eliminate that, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Because it's, and just double check that it's covered adequately in the occupancy tax law. Um, language.
Yeah.
The concern about paying the occupancy tax or whatever.
Okay. So, can I ask one question, but I can't bring it up, for the clear, the clearwater permit, we don't need to cover that this week.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, take care.
Alright, have a good night.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.